I call the Commissioners' meeting of March 3rd, 2021 to order. We are once again joined by veteran Don Bradley to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And we were also joined today by a guest who hasn't been here for a while, Pastor Kevin Shively from St. Matthew's Church. Did I say it right? St. Matthew's Lutheran Church, who's going to lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you for your leadership in this community, because we all know how difficult leadership is always, but especially this past year or so. Let us pray. Almighty God, this is a community of many religions and many faith traditions. But no matter how, oh God, we understand you, we follow you, we trust you, we revere you. No matter how we do that, oh God, we covet your presence in this meeting now, that you would bring to this gathering and to these people, your wisdom, and your justice, and your truth. And that all decisions will be made in ways that will best serve the people, oh God, and enrich and improve their lives in all things, oh Lord. Surround us with your love and your grace. And we pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
We will move on to item four of the agenda. I hope, item four.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through D as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number five.
I make a motion to approve the following purchases between the County of York on behalf of Fleet Management Department and Skymark Refuelers, Kansas City, Kansas, for use at the York Airport located in Thomasville, Pennsylvania. These vehicles are purchased through a PennDOT Bureau of Aviation grant and is at no cost to the county, and they were listed in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number six.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Adult Probation Department and Whitmoyer Public Safety Group, Coatesville, Pennsylvania, for ammunition for caring officers and faring trainings for a total cost of $14,240.19 under a PA Coast Stars contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number seven.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Public Works and DE Gemel, Redline, Pennsylvania, for emergency traffic detour signage for Bridge 258, Slate Hill Road in Fairview Township, crossing over the Yellow Breaches Creek, for a total cost of $13,981 for installation and $1,379 per month after the first 30 days. These costs will be split 50/50 with Cumberland County.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number eight.
I make a motion to approve a letter of agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Adult Probation Department and Gdanza Delta, Pennsylvania, to provide court reporting networks driving under the influence education classes and intervention treatment to DUI clients.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number nine.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Human Services Department and Community Progress Council, York, Pennsylvania, to provide rental assistance for eligible residents in York County for a total cost of $13,367,549 for the period of March 3rd, 2021 to December 31st, 2021. These are direct funds from the U.S. Treasury Department to be used for rental arrears.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And I know we're joined today by Robin Warbaugh from the Community Progress Council, one of our staff members, who have a few comments to share on the program.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to run a very important program for York County. So many residents have been adversely affected by the coronavirus, and their financial status has really been impacted greatly. And so we appreciate this opportunity to help residents of the community. I'm not going to talk a whole lot about the program. I'm going to ask Ruth Robbins, our chief program officer, to describe a little bit about how we'll be running the program. What I do want to say to folks who are listening or viewing this morning is that Community Progress Council has a broad array of services. We provide one-on-one coaching or case management to folks. And I desperately want for folks to consider staying connected to Community Progress Council after receiving some level of assistance from this program. The impact of this virus, the financial impact, is great. And assistance related to rent or utilities is not going to be the only issue that they need to address. Most likely, the impact will be long-term, so we ask that we have the opportunity to work with them to help them address whatever issues they're facing. But I'll let Ruth talk a little bit more about the program.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. There's a lot of information in this program. I'm going to try to hit the highlights, and I'd want to say probably 100 times, please check our website and our Facebook page. There will be lots of information there. This program covers rental and utility assistance for renters for up to 12 months. Arrears have to be addressed first, but once those arrears are addressed, people could get rent paid for three months in advance in three-month increments, but the maximum is 12 months. Homeowners are not eligible through this program. And even for utility assistance, we will be putting information on our website about assistance that may come available for homeowners. The program can assist with rent and utilities back to March of 2020, so it's a full year. Eligible residents must be at or below 80% of the area median income, and attest that they've been impacted by COVID. And that's pretty broad at this point, lots of people impacted by COVID. We will be running an online application in order to streamline this process. It's a lot of money to give out to a lot of people, and we really want to make sure that we're not relying on paper and processing. The online application will be available in both English and Spanish, and I'll talk about other languages later. We will be working with partners to expand access across the county. So we've already talked at the Coalition on Homelessness about the need for partners to understand what the application process is, and to help applicants apply, because we want to make sure that it's as easy as possible, and we have as many resources on the ground helping as possible. We realize that not everyone will have technology in order to fill out this application, so we need our partners to open their doors and provide staff to help people fill those out. We, at Community Progress Council, we will be, by appointment, helping people fill out the application. And I reference languages. We do have a language service that can accommodate up to 200 different languages, so if someone comes in and needs a different language, we'll use that service. Information sessions will be coming. We're going to do sessions for community partners, so that, again, they can understand how they can help in this process. We will be casting a very broad net on that. So state rep offices, maybe the magistrates, anybody that will listen and would be willing to help, we would love to talk with. We'll do information sessions for landlords, and we will be doing information for applicants. The landlord does have a role in this application process, and so we want to make sure that they understand what their role is there. Again, all information will be posted on our Facebook page and our website. It's really important that people go there. When we ran the last program, we were sort of buried in phone calls and unable to keep up with the number of calls. The information will go there. The online application will be a portal, so folks will be able to register an account that will be attached to an email. They will get constant communication through that email, and they'll be able to log back in to see where they are in the approval process. We're working really hard to be up and running by March 15th, which is a little more than 10 days away. It's a lot of work to get ready, and we want to make sure that the system is ready to process these applications before we open it. But we're working really hard for the 15th. And I want to put out there that we are hiring for many positions, so please check our website for our job listings. And this approval was for $13 million. There is another approximately $17 million coming through the state for rent assistance, but we're focusing on the federal funds right now. Can I answer any questions?
I just have one. I know there's income limits and some other things, but somebody, a family, maybe of four, living in the community and for several months, and not be able to pay their water bill, maybe their gas bill, their back rent, is there limits on how much can go to a family or an individual?
No, there are no limits at this point.
Okay.
And does the reimbursement go to the landlord or to the tenant?
Good question. All payments will go to landlords and utility companies.
Great.
And I guess there's no way of knowing how many people this could affect, but this is a large amount of money, and hopefully it'll have a big impact on the community.
It is. I will tell you, in the fall when we ran the program, we gave out $1.4 million to just under 500 families. So this amount of money is 10 times the amount that we gave out then, for context.
Well, thanks for your work.
Sure. Thank you.
Any additional comments, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 10.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York and Lit Communities Broadband, Inc., Chelseaa, Alabama, for a demand aggregation and analysis study at a cost of $19,463.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I do want to comment that this item on the agenda will not be paid for out of county dollars. We have several philanthropic organizations in the community who came forward to fund this project on behalf of York County. We know that some of the federal grants that are out there for broadband require a demand aggregation study, so I wanted to assure the public that no tax dollars are going to be used for this study. And I believe we already have money in the bank that's come through from those funders. So for those funders watching, thank you again for your generosity and helping the county continue to move this project forward. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 11.
I make a motion to approve a contract amendment between the County of York on behalf of the Facilities Management Department and Masonry Preservation Service, Inc., Bloomberg, Pennsylvania, to reconfigure scaffold for the Dome Leak Project in an amount not to exceed $19,700.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 12.
I make a motion to approve an agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Treasurer's Office and Jacobus Borough to fulfill the duties of the tax collector for the collection of real estate taxes for the borough effective February 9th, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And I guess, Barb, in this situation, do we have a resignation or...
Oops. Yes, we had resignation actually in January, and this position will be on the ballot this year. So if there are interested people, they need to gather signatures and complete the election ballot.
Okay. So just to confirm for folks, I know the mic wasn't working for Barb. This is a position that's open now, and for anyone watching from Jacobus that has an interest in being a tax collector, you could certainly do what's necessary to get on the ballot for the upcoming election in May. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 13.
I make a motion to approve an agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Department of Emergency Services, 911, and Glenville Ambulance LLC of Glenville, Pennsylvania, to provide access to York County's public safety radio system at no cost to the county.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 14.
Motion to ratify the approval of the fiscal year 2020-2021 Act 148 invoice covering July 1st, 2020 to September 30th, 2020, on behalf of the York County Office of Children, Youth and Families, to the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, Office of Children, Youth and Families, in the amount of $11,792,998.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And I think, Mark, this is just the quarterly report going up to Human Services. Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 15.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2021-06, the York County 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan, 2020 York County Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solutions Grant, Federal Entitlement Programs. The York County 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan are required to be submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the community planning and development program funding. President Commissioner is authorized and directed to execute all required documents for the submission of the plan, the administration of the programs.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. I know Felicia is here. Do you want to share any comments regarding this?
I also have with me Joeyanne Galliano and Dory Brannan, who are respectively the chief of the Community Development and the Housing Divisions that play a significant part in spending and investing the federal dollars into our community. But this plan, the consolidated plan, is a plan that lays out what are the federal community development performance measures that they'd like to see accomplished in all communities, as well as what are the specific county needs that we have in York County in housing and community development. And it lays out a five-year plan of not only identifying those needs, but also targeting how we intend to invest in the community to meet those needs. The annual action plan is the first kind of spending year out of the consolidated plan, and you'll see an annual action plan for each successive year within the consolidated plan. The one thing that is important to know, the funding goes towards a variety of infrastructure and community improvement programs or projects that Joeyanne Galliano and her staff monitor. It also deals with dealing with persons with disabilities and making sure the communities are established in a way that can meet their needs. There's also emergency and transitional shelters and the supportive services that go along with serving the homeless population. Those are some of the HUD performance measures. And then some of the county needs that we've identified is housing rehabilitation assistance and weatherization services to low and moderate-income owner-occupied households, the development of affordable housing and rental units to meet some of our low and moderate-income home ownership and affordable rental needs, and then also providing homeowner and renter counseling services to nonprofit agencies, so that they can make sure that people that are entering the homeowner realm are adequately equipped. So altogether, there's over $3 million that are invested in the community on an annual basis. And we know that the first funding year, this 2020 Annual Action Plan, there was a marginal increase from the prior year. So we know that the dollars are increasing a little bit each year, which is good to see, because we had a tremendous hit from the economic downturn, and it slowly kind of dug out of the trenches, and we're back up to almost to the point where we're the pre-economic downturn investment measures, which is always good for our community. If you have any questions about the plan, I'll try to answer those, but if you have any specific questions about housing or community improvements, I would turn it over to Dory or Joeyanne.
Maybe just one question about the funding level and coming back. Is that based on a line item in the federal budget, or is it based on population or growth or needs, the amount of funding we get each year?
It's a function of the budget, and it's different every year. You know, obviously, political swings impact it, as well as how willing they are to budget additional dollars. We've seen it go up and down or flatline, but it's not based on a specific piece of legislation that has to be renewed every five years, like the transportation funding. It's a specific line item in the budget. So it's pretty steady since the early 1970s. Thank you.
That's pretty thorough. Thanks, Felicia. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 16.
Motion to approve Ferris Farhat General Construction LLC's contract time extension request, change order number one for Bridge 28 on Kennedy Road, Lower Chancery Township, and authorize the signature of the President Commissioner for the 2019 York County Bridge Maintenance Contract, number one, bridge repairs extending the completion date by 61 days to March 19th, 2021.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. I know there's three bridge items here, and our county engineer's here to know.
Sure. I should have added to both of these motions that both of these contracts are nearing their end or just about done. Just needed some time because of weather and COVID and some other things, but both of these change orders are at no cost to the county.
Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 17.
Motion to approve Ferris Farhat General Construction LLC's contract time extension request, change order number one for Bridge 160A on Lake Road, Paradise, Washington Township, and authorize signature of the President Commissioner for the 2019 York County Bridge Maintenance Contract, number two, bridge removal, extending the completion date by 82 days to April 9th, 2021.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 18.
Motion to approve entering into three temporary construction easements and deeds for property located on Chestnut Grove Road to facilitate the work necessary for County Bridge Number 273, located in Carroll Township over Stony Run, at no cost to the county.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 19.
Motion to approve the exoneration of 2021 York County real estate taxes on the following parcels in the face amount indicated for the property owned by the County of York is listed below in the agenda.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Maybe a dumb question, Mark, and maybe Barb can answer this, but if we own these properties, and we've been doing this every year, ever since we've been in office, why do we bill ourselves if we know we're going to exonerate them?
Because the bill includes both the county amount and the municipal amount.
So because there's a municipal amount, we'd have to bill it, okay.
We also have the school amounts in the summer.
Right. Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 20.
Motion to approve an intermunicipal agreement between the County of York and Springsberry Township for the allocation of the cost for preparation of a grant application and up to maximum $375,000 in project costs associated with the Davies Drive extension to East Market Street. These costs are included in the county's 2021 liquid fuels budget.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And Mark, maybe you want to... Since I've been here the longest, I've talked about this project for many, many years. We've had discussions with the railroad, and we work with Springsberry Township. And I know before I came into office, there was some money put aside to put this through. So where are we at, and what can people expect out of Springsberry Township about this project?
This project is moving forward. We finally, well, Springsberry Township finally got approval from the PUC to allow us to move forward with this. We have contributed monies in the past towards the project, but the county has basically made an offer to help or assist in the funding of the Davies Drive extension. What this will allow us to do is to abandon the Pleasant Acres Road Bridge at a savings in excess of $1 million, which provides some of the funding to help Springsberry Township complete the road project. And it will impact both the township and the county, all of our facilities in the area.
That's a good project, yeah.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 21.
Motion to enter into a license agreement with Pomegranate Real Estate to lease property located at the crossroads, 351 Lox Road, York, Pennsylvania, for a period of four months to use as a community vaccination center and a monthly rent of $35,000 plus utilities and startup costs. All costs shall be reimbursed through FEMA to the county.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. For folks watching, we just want to make sure everyone is clear. The Board of Commissioners are partnering with Wellspan Health for this community vaccination clinic. It will not be open until we have a sufficient vaccine supply in order to open a mass vaccination clinic. So we are going to continue to do the planning that's necessary, and when the vaccine becomes available in a mass quantity, we will open the clinic. We know folks are struggling to get appointments, but it's really due to the supply of vaccine at this juncture. So for those of you there in Phase 1A, continue to work with Wellspan and UPMC and your family provider to schedule vaccinations. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number 22.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of March 3rd, 2021 totaling $6,802,341.63.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We did have an executive session between our last meetings on matters related to personnel in the Commissioner's office. I'm going to move on to other business. We have two things to celebrate today. The first thing that we're going to celebrate is retirement of Mark Kimmel from the Conservation District. He joins us today, as well as we're joined by Mike Flinchball, who is an executive committee member of the Conservation District. So on behalf of the Commissioners, I'm going to turn it over to...
Mark wants to run the video first.
Okay, to Mark Walters.
Actually, I was hoping you would do the...
Okay.
...for us to put this up.
So, Mark Kimmel, if you could just maybe come and stand up.
Good to see you. Going to stand here, well, social distance, keep our thing. I'm proud to be here today to read this proclamation, and I've had the pleasure of working with Mark ever since I became a Commissioner about 13 years ago. So this proclamation is for Mark Kimmel. Whereas Mark Kimmel began working for the York County Conservation District in 1985 and was named District Manager in 1987, Mark has overseen the protection and improvement of the natural resources of York County for more than three decades. Mark has tirelessly supported the York County agricultural community in its efforts to manage soil and nutrient and improve local water quality. Mark has educated thousands of school-aged children through York County's nationally renowned Invarathon Program, some of whom have gone on to work at the York County Conservation District. Mark served York County and furthered its conservation accomplishments in a rapidly developing county approaching 500,000 residents across 911 square miles of land and several hundred miles of streams. York County and its natural resources are much better off because of his steady service. Mark has cultivated a healthy, family-like work environment for his employees, who speak highly of his leadership, mentorship, and moral values. On March 15th, 2021, Mark Kimmel will retire after 36 years of service to York County. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of York County, Pennsylvania, would like to thank Mark Kimmel for serving the citizens of our county. Given this day in York and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on the third day of March in the year of our Lord, 2021, and it's signed by the Board of Commissioners. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you. Do I want to say something first? And I don't know if Mike wants to come up and make some comments?
I do a picture with you guys after the meeting.
I jotted down just a couple of things, because I'm not real good at remembering So forgive me if I just read through this, because that's the easiest way for me to do it. When I was hired in '85, I never expected... I'm going to take that off. It's okay. Never expected to be with the district or the county for 36 years. I've been fortunate to be surrounded by great people, from my first boss, Linda Houseeal, to the dedicated staff and volunteer... to the dedicated staff and volunteer directors, which Michael is one, Department and Cooperating Agency folks, and fellow region and state managers. I've worked with all great people. We've had good support from schools, businesses, organizations, and most importantly, the citizens of York County as well. I've had the benefit of directors who have given hundreds, and for some, thousands of hours of time, their time and talents to district efforts. It's not uncommon for directors and associates to serve for several decades, freely sharing their knowledge, experience and wisdom as we develop annual work plan and projects. The county commissioners and administrators who saw the value in natural resources conservation and water quality improvement protection have been key and critical to the district's success and my longevity. It's not always been easy or even popular, but I can say under my watch, we've attempted to administer the programs fairly for all and to the benefit of all. That's a challenge when you're working in a regulatory role. I believe we've had great partners, and we've been a good partner along the way with team atmosphere in the office. I've done my best to support the staff with compassion in a family-friendly way, encouraging them to grow, excel, succeed, both at work and personally. The district employees have certainly helped me look like I knew what I was doing for all these years. I think I've left York County a little better than I found it nearly four decades ago, but we still have much work to do. I believe if we value the land, water and natural resources above profit motives, we will reap rewards and profits now as well as in future generations. It's definitely time for a new manager, and I'm leaving trusting that our local, state and national elected officials will show them the same support they provide to me and continue to value natural resources, and hope they will continue to provide Conservation Districts and our partners the resources to continue to educate our students, citizens, and provide technical assistance for landowners and operators as they steward the land. I won't miss the commute. I live in Dillsburg. There aren't very many of us up that way that work for the county, for good reason. The, I won't miss the late meeting, late-night meetings. Really had no idea how big York County was all those years ago, rarely venturing south of Dover from Dillsburg. Most of us folks up in that part of the county gravitate towards Cumberland County, unfortunately, for business and whatnot because it's closer. It's been quite a journey for a farm kid from Dillsburg, quoting a line from a favorite movie of mine, worth, worth trouble? What trouble? Thank you.
We have a short video to share, and then Mike has a few comments to close out. So Mike, maybe we'll bring you up while Mark's dealing with...
Mouse pad is not working. The mouse pad.
I'd like to thank the Commissioners for the opportunity to come to the recognize Mark here and his years of dedication to the county and the district. On behalf of the Board of Directors and the staff of the Conservation District, I'd like to thank Mark for his ever thirty years of dedicated service to the district and to the conservation efforts throughout the county, the region and the state. During his career, Mark guided the district from a small four-person operation that, believe it or not, started out working in a closet of the old morgue at Pleasant Acres. And if you want to know, ask Mark about that. I, that was before my time, but Mark can tell you some good stories about that. So we grew from that up to the operation we are today with twenty-one employees working in a nice, modern building out of Pleasant Acres. During his tenure, the programs grew from the initial focus on helping farmers conserve their soil, which is still a bedrock pillar of, of the organization, to include efforts to keep sediment from construction sites out of streams, programs to assist landowners to protect and preserve the streams running through their properties, efforts to help municipalities maintain and improve the dirt and gravel, no-volume roads in their townships, as well as the creation of what Commissioner Hook mentioned earlier, the, the nationally and state-recognized Envirathon program, and more recently, efforts to help the county develop the programs needed to meet our, our commitments under the Chesapeake Bay program. During his time as a manager, Mark has been a tireless advocate for his staff members. He's always been willing to step up to the bat for someone and advocate for a remediation or a raise when it was due. And as a member of the district's Personnel Committee, I have been a witness to the great level camaraderie and commitment to the mission of the district that has developed among the staff under Mark's tenure. Mark has also had a great relationship with the Board of Directors through the years, and he's worked with six board chairmen, countless directors and associate directors over the years. I actually find it hard to believe I've worked with Mark for nineteen years, going on nineteen years, the district. And during my time working with Mark, he has always provided a steady guiding hand to the board. He's, he's great at framing the issues to the board during our meetings, offering his opinion when we ask him for them, and then stepping back and let the board discuss and make the decisions needed on the issue that we're debating. So in closing, I would again like to thank Mark for his time and dedication to the York District, the citizens of the county, and especially for his dedication and commitment to the ideals of conservation. It's been a pleasure to work with Mark, and on behalf of myself and the rest of the board, we wish you the best in your future endeavors. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll give it one more try here.
Hi, Mark. It's so hard to believe it's been nearly thirty years ago that you...
Our late director, Paul Wilson, our Red Line Roadkill Envirathon team and coaches flew to Mapleton, Maine for the nineteen ninety-one National Envirathon Competition. I was just a scrawny, shy teenager at the time, and you were, even back then, the Conservation District Manager. I have so many good memories of my high school days competing in the Envirathon, not the least of which included a tubing trip down to Meandering River in Maine, where my team and I were lost for several hours. Our tire tubes went flat, and we were covered by leeches, sunburn, rashes and hives, just, just to name a few. But we survived somehow, and the Envirathon was and really is a lifesaver for so many outdoor-loving students like myself.
Thank you for all the years of guidance and support that you've been to not only myself, but my family.
I'm sure you'll miss the nine-degree weather for the tree sale, but I really appreciate all that you did for the district and moving it along, and I think we've come a long way.
We've seen lots of changes together over the years, haven't we? I think it was five people when you started, now we have twenty-one. We grew the Bay Program, we saw the development of the Nutrient Management Program, and we saw the growth of the Ag Program.
Our county and natural resources are much better off because of your tireless, steady service. You are a true conservationist, always loyal to the district's mission and a great role model to the district's growing team of twenty-one team members.
Been there when I needed it. At some pretty rough times. I will miss talking about hunting and sports. And remember, basketball was the greatest in the eighties, wasn't it?
Mark, thank you for being a mentor to me and for your listening ear as I share my experiences in raising my family over the years, or my latest hunting stories, or a multitude of other crazy life experiences. It's no wonder you decided to retire.
Want to remind you of that first day when I came in and sat down next to Dawn, and before long, we were giggling and laughing, and you come out of the office that afternoon and said, yep, I think this one will work. Fifteen years later, here we are at your retirement as you head out the door, and I wish you and your family the best. Thanks again for always being there for any of us, for whatever that might be, that we needed, and the support and the guidance that you've given us in all the years you've been here. Thank you.
Wish you, Carolyn, and your three daughters the very best as you enter the next chapter in your life. Now go chase those long-bearded turkeys and those big bucks, and don't forget to stop by and visit, and don't forget to bring the deer balona and the glazed donuts. Thank you always, Mark.
Enjoy all the fun and freedom. Take care, stay healthy, enjoy every sunrise and sunset in the mountains. Thanks, Mark.
So again, Mark, just on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, county employees, thank you for your thirty-six years of, of service. And I like deer balona, so you can certainly drop some off in our office. The, the Board of Commissioners also has another proclamation that we wanted to read, and it's a little lengthy, so I'm going to take my mask off. I want to assure the public that Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Hope are well in excess of six feet of me. But the Board of Commissioners recognizes there's a lot of folks out there helping our community, especially during this difficult time. And for those of you that aren't aware, March is Social Worker Appreciation Month. And we have a lot of social workers, Robyn's clapping, we have a lot of social workers in our nonprofit community and for-profit community that, that are on the front lines. But we also have a lot of county employees who work as social workers. And the three Commissioners really want to acknowledge your contributions. We appreciate what you do, and we know these are very difficult times. So the county has social workers in mental health and intellectual disabilities, drug and alcohol, area for agency on aging, children, youth and families, the Youth Development Center, the York County Prison. We can't forget our friends across the street, those folks in probation services, as well as domestic relations. So on behalf of the, the three Commissioners here, we want to acknowledge you all and thank you. And the proclamation, we're going to let the Human Services Department have this in their, in their office. So if they want to rotate that between departments, they can certainly do that. So whereas the social work profession for decades has been dedicated to improving human well-being and enhancing the basic needs of all people, especially those most alone, vulnerable and oppressed, and whereas this year's Social Work Month theme is "Social Workers Are Essential" embodies the heroic contributions of the social work profession to our nation, including the work social workers have done to heal our nation during these times of pandemic, racial unrest, economic uncertainty, political divisiveness, and where social workers have always been present in times of crisis, helping people overcome the issues such as death and grief, helping people and communities recover from natural disasters such as fires, hurricanes and earthquakes. And where our social workers have helped this nation live up to its values by successfully advocating for equal rights for all people, no matter their race, sexual identity, gender, gender expression, culture or religion. And whereas the social work profession is one of the fastest-growing professions in the United States with nearly eight hundred thousand people expected to be employed as social workers in 2028, where our social workers serve in all parts of our society to empower people to live to their fullest potential, and where our social workers have worked throughout the pandemic in hospitals, schools, nursing homes, childcare, hotlines, shelters, and I'm sure that we've probably missed a few, in response to COVID-nineteen, and helping families, individuals cope, heal and grieve. And where our social workers involved with child welfare and juvenile justice systems, including our own colleagues at the Support Center for Child Advocates, are crucial in advancing the safety, justice and well-being of children and families in our community. Where our social workers will continue to stand ready to assist our nation in overcoming present and future challenges, including pushing for racial equity, ending gun violence, improving healthcare and mental health care for all. Now, now therefore, we the Commissioners of York County hereby proclaim the month of March, 2021, as National Social Work Month, and call upon all our friends of child advocates and citizens of the world to join the National Association of Social Workers to celebrate and support the social work, social work profession. So just want to thank everyone out there that's watching, and again, a big thanks to our county employees who work in that capacity. Any other business? Okay. We will open it up for a period of public comment. Looks like we have one individual. If you could just state your name and your municipality, and if you could leave your comments to three minutes, please, and I'll ask Michelle to...
Facing this way.
That's, that's fine.
Okay. Ryan Supler, York City. I just wanted to also, I guess before I begin, thank you, social workers. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you to the gentleman who was honored, and also thank you to Community Progress Council, that rent money, it, it's duly needed in the city, especially also for our county. I also wanted to talk about is that we're going to have some petition events. I'm also a Democratic candidate for York City. I'm going to have one later today at Holy Hound from four to six.
Ryan, if I could just ask you a pause. Michelle?
Political candidates aren't permitted to talk.
Not in political events, okay. All right. Well, my name is Ryan Supler, running for York City Council. Thank you for this time.
Any other public comment? That's okay. Okay. Hearing none. If I could have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to Salary Board. Thanks, everyone who came to the Commissioners' meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the February seventeenth, 2021 Salary Board meeting as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have number two.
I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements, or as set forth in the York County Employee Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments and row offices with no additional benefits or concessions unless otherwise noted, and as is stated in the Internal Salary Board Detail. Department Five, voter elections. Department Eleven, payroll. Department Twenty-three, Conservation District. Department Twenty-four, Human Resources. Department Twenty-eight, MHIDD. Department Thirty-One, juvenile probation. Department Thirty-two, adult probation. Department Forty, children, youth and families. Department Sixty-One, court administration and row officers. Department Twelve, comptroller. And Department Fifty-One, sheriff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have two seconds, and it was in unison. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, and we're going to move on to Retirement Board.
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting held on February seventeenth, 2021 as submitted.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're joined today by Lee Martin from Marquette. He's one of the managing directors, who's going to review the 2020 third and fourth quarter performance. Good morning.
Morning.
Oh, great. Thank you. It's me?
Morning. Hello.
If you could give mine to the gentleman back there in the glasses, that'd be fine.
Yes.
Yeah.
To Rob?
To Rob, yeah. Do you have an extra one for him?
Yes, yes.
Oh, you do. Okay.
Morning, Lee.
Have a spare if anyone needs one. Do you want me to keep this on, or? You sure? Let me move back a little bit then for you, Bob. I know I'm difficult to understand at the best of times. It's great, it's great to see everybody. I think this is my third meeting in face-to-face in one year. And actually enjoy coming early and listening to what's going on in the county. It's, especially being locked away for a year, it's, it's really nice to see that you're still moving forward and there's great things going on here. So, so we'll, we'll get you through this relatively quickly here. You know, you do, you do have the three funds. We'll just take five minutes on the markets, maybe five or ten just on the pension, and then we'll just hit the highlights for the 457 and the OPEB. Sound the plan? Let me just quickly get my glasses here because I'm a year older. again. But expectations are, at least over the winter, things are going to be slower. That's what we're seeing, because still some of the country is locked down. But expectations are, as the year goes on here, you know, we will open up and the economy will improve. And really down to four things. One is the fiscal stimulus this next round. Two would be consumer spending, because all the CARES Act money that folks have got, savings are at higher levels than we've seen in America for many, many years. And there's a lot of pent-up demand. If you're like me, want to go out, want to go and spend, that will obviously be accretive to GDP. Business investment, you know, post-recession last year, everyone was cut at inventories. We're actually seeing it now in the markets today. There's a semiconductor shortage. GM are actually having to close plants because of it. So we need to ramp up inventories again. That's obviously very accretive to GDP. And then the final one has really been the housing market. With rates being at record lows, it's really encouraging people to just take advantage of this really late cycle. It's kind of like an '06-'07 in the housing market right now, and house prices are going through the roof. So what I just talked to you about was economies, not the markets. The kind of markets are kind of priced this in already. You saw that the end of last year, that we expect to be open. At least the good news from yesterday that we hear is, you know, it looks like everyone who wants a vaccine should be able to get vaccinated here by the end of May, May or June, which does really point to getting open again here by summer. So that's great. If you go forward two pages to 11, just the only thing to take from this, it's a global pandemic, and we've thrown a lot of money at it. Over $30 trillion, as we sit here today, has been thrown at this around the world by developed economies. So there's a lot of debt. The only good news around that is that the cost of the debt is low, you know, because rates are so low. But as we saw, over the past week or two, rates are starting to go up again now, because they see normalcy arriving. And, you know, at some point, that might become too expensive and could cause the economy to grind to a halt again. But ultimately, long-term, the thing to take from that is it's probably going to be inflationary. The good news is you guys already have a lot of real assets now in your portfolio to kind of prepare for that rate increase. You know, you recently added infrastructure, which is a very good hedge against that. And we've already seen that in the first quarter, that you've been invested there. What do you mean for returns? Page 12, obviously very much a risk-on year, provided by the Fed. You can see for the quarter in the green there, US stocks up 15%, a little behind international at 16%, and emerging markets about 20% for the quarter. That's an area we do expect it will come back pretty strongly, emerging markets here, as we reopen up. And we started to see that, as you see in last quarter, and it's occurring again this quarter. We have dialed up your emerging markets exposure because of that. On the fixed income side, you can see up .7, a little bit positive here in US bonds, and that was all due to credits, some late credits narrowing. Treasuries are actually negative for the quarter. But it's kind of the, if you look at the brown one there, seven and a half percent last year for bonds, who would have thought we would ever get there? And it's all on the back of that big rate decrease that we saw, you know, courtesy of Fed again. What it's meant going forward is huge headwinds for fixed income, which we will talk about in a minute. And we're seeing it this year, fixed income's negative, and has been for a couple of months now. If you just turn over, let's just finish on these pages here, 13 and 14, just quickly. 13, we did see a change in leadership in the fourth quarter. Cyclical names did come back as the vaccines came on board in November, markets really took off. And we've seen a change more to financials and energy coming back. They were severely sold off earlier in the year. As you can see, they were up 30% and 25% respectively. However, prior to that, it was a real growth-on-year and a low-quality run year. Growth actually outperformed value by over 35% last year. In over 20 years I've been doing this, I've never seen such a disparity. But not only that, it was the low quality. And if you just turn, if you just look at the bottom of page 14, that bottom right-hand corner table, last year, if you invested in stocks that were losing money, had negative earnings, bleak future ahead of them, you would have been up 47%. If you invested in stocks, however, that had good earnings, that you taught at school, these are the good long-term investments to have, you would have been up only 17%. And that was all due to the Fed. So higher quality, good companies, good strategies, which a lot of pension funds tend to have more of those, institutional funds that have negative flows, you do need to have more safety. So it was a year where low quality and indexing really led the way because of that. So I thought that would be interesting to see. And it's actually a perspective I put in. It came out yesterday. You may have been emailed it already, but it gets a little deeper into that quality phenomenon. But we are starting to see quality come back now, fundamentals matter, you know, on the expectation that the markets are going to open up, and rates are going to go, start going back up again. So what we'll finish on, 16 here, just quickly what we're looking at for this year. Obviously, it's still about COVID and containment of that. Good news is there are a lot of good vaccines out there, and the mRNA one seemed to be working really well with the variants. What hasn't been as well so far, but it's starting to improve, is just getting in people's arms, as you were talking about in your own meeting earlier here. The key word is trying to get people vaccinated as soon as possible, create this herd immunity, so you get less and less of these mutations. Because the last thing we need is you get a mutation, and the vaccines don't work, and we're back to square one, and that will be brutal for the economy. So also looking forward, what do we expect in the way of spending? Infrastructure is like, we were on a call with four senators, and infrastructure is like catnip down in Congress right now, and there's going to be some huge spending, it appears, there. Good news is you're already invested in that, and you're going to see that in your return here in a minute. But with all this extra spending, it's going to mean taxes are going to go up here at some point. So again, something else to be, for us to look ahead. Interest rates, just quickly, I did talk about that and their impact on fixed. And as you guys know, as rates go up, prices of bonds come down, because people just want to buy the new higher bond. So when your yield's already at about .6, and, you know, your duration's at four, you know, you just go 10 basis points up, you're almost down to a flat, if not negative return in fixed income at that point. So those are the issues pension funds and fiduciaries yourself are struggling with. How do we address that the next four or five years? Good news is you got a lot of gains from the past five years to kind of help mitigate some of that issue you may run into the next year or two. And then the final one I just put on there, more for fun really, but this democratization of markets. What do I mean about that? And I added this in just a couple of weeks ago, post Robin Hood, GameStop. I'm sure you've all seen that in the news. Anybody can now just pick the phone up and buy fractional shares in a minute, less than a minute. And all that has done is created, people have been sitting at home and just buying stocks and getting on these message boards like Reddit, et cetera, and trying to move stock prices. And they have for the thinly traded stocks. Reality is, that's not going to have any meaningful impact on global markets long-term, because they're just too big. You're not going to be able to do that. But I'll stop there. That was kind of quick high-level overview of markets and what we're seeing going forward. Any questions? Okay. If you turn the tab three, let's jump into your pension. See, there's a lot on the observations here, because the group have been, some investment group here, have been working very hard, and you've been doing some additional diversification. Anyway, for the quarter, you finished at $477 million there. Today, you're about $10 million above that. You were getting close to that $500 million at one point. I think we're only about two short. In fact, if they had valued the real assets at that point, maybe you were above. But you'll be above that pretty short order, because the key is you just look at your gain for the quarter, over $40 million. As your fund's getting bigger now, gains and losses are meaningful from a dollar point of view than they were 10 years ago. But you can see a very strong return there, up 10% for the quarter. What worked well for you was that cyclical return back to the value tilt, and then all the alternatives you've added over the past few years, real estate, timber, farmland, and infrastructure, all have been very accretive for you in the past quarter. What wasn't as good, as I mentioned earlier, was just the higher-quality type investments and the low vol, as we talked about. Fundamentals didn't matter last year, because the Fed said, "Don't worry, you guys, just bet away on the markets. We'll backstop it." So you can't lose. For the year, you're up 11.5%, so well above your assumed rate of return. And that replaces 2015, which was a bad year. So your five-year return now, as we sit here today, is actually 9.6% over five years. So that is a lot of cushion in gains over the past five years that you're going to help, that'll help boomish on your actuarial areas, you look forward from a funding point of view. That will help to keep a kind of lid on that.
So we estimate what?
What did you say the five-year was?
9.6, yeah.
And we estimate every year, what, 7.25 or something?
You're 6.9 now.
6.9.
Yeah, yeah.
I know we lowered it. I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, you've been lowering it because of the expectations. As you say, fixed income will be barely positive the next few years, and that's about a quarter of your portfolio. So that's why you've been dialing it down. And then as you dial that down, you do, excuse me, you do the same with your assets, you de-risk them as well, because that's what you're doing by taking that assumed rate of return down. You're de-risking, and then you get more certainty year on year to get in and around. What you'll find is, if you have really great, great years, like last year, you will lag your bench. The further north of 10% you go, you will lag more. And then you have the opposite. On the other side, as you go down, the further negative it goes, you will go down less. Because what, how you've structured this is to get more returns year on year, in and around that 6.9%, that certainty, because you're very well-funded now. So if you could get 7% every year, you'd take it. That's kind of how you designed it. What, and you've done it with a lot of lower volatility and downside. So when you look at your risk-adjusted, from a risk-adjusted point of view, you're actually even better. And even with your alternatives, very low cost, only 35 basis points, which is about 20 basis points lower than the average pension fund within the US. Some changes that were made last quarter, you did get that first call for your infrastructure, and now hit it out of the park first quarter, as you're going to see here shortly. You did get that first call at the end of the year for the private equity. And then you got your final call, at least this time around, we'll have some discussion of whether you want to re-up, bring it back to 3%, because your final call on the timber and farmland, again, which is doing quite well now. You're starting to get a lot of dividends from that, a lot of income from that. What we're expecting here this quarter for you and looking ahead, you do have the IFM infrastructure still weighed in the fund. They've just done a $4.5 billion acquisition, so they expect to call that by July 1 for you. We did add to some emerging markets, which has been very accretive for you, you're going to see here shortly. That's on the back of what I talked about in the market environment. You mimicked what you did on the OPEB side by adding defensive equity, because there's still fear in the markets, and people are paying up for the options. It's adding about 1% every quarter of outperformance by doing that. So you've added that in here as well. And what we're going to do before the next meeting is look at analysis, really address the fixed income. Is there anything you can do with a fixed income? Maybe like you've done on the equity side, where you have kind of an open-ended private debt for a piece of the fixed, just to give you a little higher probability of getting a positive return in fixed income over the next few years. So that's an analysis we're going to be doing for you. So if you just jump to page, well, just quickly on 22, and I'm going to jump you to the back of this, you can see the last couple of years, you've got this negative flow coming out, this brown at the bottom here now. That means you're getting negative cash flows. And we saw that when we did that asset liability study, Rob, a few years back. We saw that coming down the pike, which is why you started to de-risk your liabilities, and why you started diversifying, go more conservative from an investment point of view, just so you don't have any shocks here. And you saw that this year, when you had the market really crashed in the first quarter. It didn't matter to you, because you just took all the gains from treasuries to deal with benefit payments, cash flow needs. So, you know, that structure was important for you. If you jump to page 27, and again, this is why you lagged policy a little bit last year, just look at characteristics. This is your equities. Return on equity is like 25 compared to 16 for the bench. Your portfolio, your equities are about 50% higher quality. You know, they make money. They pay dividends. You see the yields higher. So that was obviously, as I said, a headwind last year, but it's starting to come into play this year, back in play, and was a couple of years ago. You know, that was very accretive to you. And everything kind of moves in cycles. But as I said, the Fed can't keep pouring gas forever. I mean, it's just, it would just take the country down with all the debt and that that we would have. So to finish up for you, just on 29 here, returns. Your US equity was behind because of the twin. You have been gradually dollar-cost averaging that down. A few years ago, they were at about 15%. It's down to five, as we sit here now today. Again, it's a very, very high-quality type fund. What we do expect as quality comes back, that that should really outperform. But at some point, once you've got that back reversion, maybe like the pension fund there, will just look predominantly just at index or the large-cap space, you know? And then you add that high-quality Smith Cap manager, who's done a great job for you, Ernest, to complement that. On the global side, you're about 1% ahead for the quarter, really driven by Dodge and Cox with value coming back. They were up 24%. And your growth managers still did quite well, American Funds within that. What was more of a headwind within the global was the low-vol manager, as we discussed before. They lagged the broad global market there, 14, but were ahead of their minimum volatility, low-vol index. International, you're about 30 basis points ahead. Some of the small cap you get with Schroders outperformed just the broad US market. And any interest in one? I mean, you know, six months ago, we're all wondering what's going to happen with real estate, and a lot of concerns. But look, both your managers up nearly 2% for the quarter. Real estate's still doing quite well, some areas of real estate. The industrial is just going through the roof, and the apartment part of it. The office is still a little kind of unknown what the long term's going to be there. And obviously, retail is not a good place at all to be. Now, both your managers, having said that, really outperformed for the quarter. But we have submitted a change here that you will see over the next couple of quarters. JP Morgan is the largest one out there. If you remember when they did the finals there seven, eight years ago, actually, no, five years ago, they were the big player. That's why the county picked them, they're like the safe option. The problem is, being the largest and biggest, they have the most. And they have a lot in retail, and they're overweight retail. Well, if retail's going to be a big headwind, nobody wants to buy those retails off them. So what we've done is put in a request, and over the next two quarters, the money will come out there, and it'll go in Clarion, which has a much lower, it has a big underweight to retail. And then the second manager we're adding is actually a fund that's only four years old. They only have one retail holding. So it should give you more of a headwind in the real estate space going forward. Okay? Infrastructure, as you can see, up over 5% compared to the bench of one first quarter there. And as I say, as rates go up, as inflation goes up, that return will go up in line with it as well. So it was a good diversifier. Fortunately, we had to wait, what was it, one and a half years before your money finally got called, and you've only been partially called here. got called, and you've only been partially called here, but it still looks like it's ahead of before inflation starts to go up. But we are seeing in the markets now this fear of inflation coming. And then just go to the bottom of the right before I finish on fixed, the Hancock Farmland, so that's now fully funded now, which is why you're starting to see good returns coming in, because now you're getting all your income you expect relative to your bench, so you're about two hundred ahead last year, and it was above real estate, too. Because I think, was it Mark or somebody reminded me the other day, lumber prices are going through the roof, I said. So again, as inflation goes up, you capture that within this as well, so you've got a bit of inflation protection within your portfolio. And then fixed income, you're pretty much on bench for the structure there, as I say, don't take too much risk. What was accretive for you for the year was the high yield. In fact, since you had it into high yield, end of March, high yield's been up twenty-six percent within the portfolio, so it was a real good little tactical play for you. So that was the pension, that was the longest. Any questions on the pension? The next two I'll just go on one page.
So with the four hundred and seventy-seven million dollars we're at today in the market?
Well, that was twelve thirty-one.
Twelve thirty-one.
Yeah, I think on this week's sheet, it was like four eighty-six or something like that, was it?
Four eighty-six. So what is the percent that we're funded now, like ninety percent, eighty percent?
We'd have to wait for Boomer Sean.
We didn't get that from Boomer Sean, yeah.
Number.
We'll have to wait for that.
But last year, you were what, nine, was it ninety or?
Ninety-one or two, I think it was.
So expectations, unless your liabilities have changed dramatically, which I don't believe they have, I've not heard that, should go up, yeah, absolutely. Because, and you're dropping it twenty fifteen off, because you know, it's a five-year.
Right.
And adding another eleven point six, so that's another, what, six hundred basis points of gain.
One thing to keep in mind there, though, is the mortality table is changing.
Right.
Yeah, so your liability will go up because of that mortality.
It might go up a little, but not as much as you'd expect because of that, because we're all living longer.
I mean, I'm at least.
But the COVID, maybe not.
I'm seeing, actually, with some counties, that's added over a million dollars to their ADC, just going with the new public mortality, yeah. I don't know what the impact will be for you guys, because every county's different, but it was more of an impact than I thought. I'm like, wow, good news is you guys are living longer than everybody else, bad news, it costs more money.
I'm just saying, of all the years I've been here, we've discussed this, Mark, you know, what we've contributed every year has continued to go up, but we keep hearing good news.
Right.
So I guess it's good news on one side for the investment side, but not good news on longevity and things like that, which equalizes it out.
That's liability side, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, those tend to offset all the good that Lee's doing.
Well, the thing is as well, because you've had a lot of good asset run, it's enabled you to make de-risk on the liability side, which means go more conservative, which puts your costs up, you're just putting more in, which you did through, if you remember, Rob, we did that through oh-eight, oh-nine, the tough times, which is why yours is not spiked now and why you're still well-funded, you know, a lot of counties just pushed everything down the road, you know? So if you just turn to tab four, as I say, we're just going to work off just the observations here for the OPEB, and then we'll just wrap up on the four fifty-seven. But here on page thirty-three, ended the year about just over thirty-four million, you're about thirty-five now, gained a little over three million, and returns pretty much in line with the pension, just north of ten percent for the quarter. Similar kind of attribution, what worked well for you. Here, actually, domestic equity worked well because you didn't have twin within that, and the value tilt, defensive equity and the high yield. Of course, you don't have all the alts in this one, you're doing the other, because it's a lot smaller fund. What didn't work as well, your real estate manager on this fund lagged just a little and the growth equities. For the year, though, again, another strong return, ten and a half percent, and again, you'll have gains there when you run your OPEB fund, too. And you gained three and a half million, but more importantly, since you funded this a few years back, you've gained over seven million dollars, which is, you know, unlike most counties that don't fund this, they have to go to the well each year, the general fund to pay the, you've got an extra seven million dollars there that'll support paying that in the future. So again, good fiscal responsibility by the county.
Mark, you pointed out what the fourth quarter did for us, Seshir.
Yeah, if you just look at the fourth quarter gain there for twenty-twenty, three-point-two million dollars, that's almost half of the annual cost of the retiree benefits.
Yeah. But are we putting money in?
Yes.
From the general fund each year?
Yeah.
So we'll continue to grow it?
Well, from all the funds.
From all the funds to make sure we're doing better each year.
Yes.
The reality is, from a funded level point of view, the OPEB is a lot lower than, now, from a dollar point of view, the cost of that is obviously a lot smaller.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, because you only recently started that fund. And then just quickly looking ahead for that one as well, similar things we're doing, you added emerging markets strategy, we did add an active bond manager now, noting the, you know, the headwinds in fixed, an active manager will give you a little bit better opportunity and maybe outperforming. And we have sold out, took the high yield down to a minimum because spreads have come right back to below long-term averages at this point, so you took advantage as it came back. We'll add to it again, it won't stay blowout again at some point, but for the time being, we won't, because when it blows out, that's negative from a return point of view. And just a couple of things to look at here, again, we're going to do a study here before the next meeting, we're going to look at maybe adding listed infrastructure here, you can't put private, and it's too smaller fund, but you can get a listed fund, like, which means it's just like a mutual fund, you know, daily trading, so you get more volatility in private, but you're investing in companies that are doing the infrastructure, so it's paying high dividends. We think of it like a kind of hybrid between equity and bonds, kind of a fixed income proxy for you, so it gives you a little bit more diversification. And again, looking at maybe these private equity, private debt, but again, open-ended, not, you know, so you get quarterly liquidity, not something where you're locking your money up ten years. And the reason you can look at some of them things, just to finish you on page thirty-four, if you have your book folded open, to Mark's point earlier, this brown, you don't have negative flows here, you're just putting money in, and then it's left, it's a long-term investment, so you can absorb a bit more illiquidity in this and a little bit more volatility than you can the pension fund. Any questions on OPEB? Okay, last tab, we'll finish on this last page for you, the four fifty-seven. And it's not been a great year across any of the counties really with four fifty-seven plans, and get it from an engagement point of view, because, you know, you're not being able to meet in big groups and educate and get engaged, that's unfortunate. But participation rate, as you can see here from a trend point of view, has continued to go up, still relatively low, sixteen point three percent of employees, but it's going up. So even in a year where it was tough from an engagement point of view. The other good thing I noticed is going up, is the contribution rate, so folks are starting to put in a bit more. Now, some of that might be just because they saw the market go whipsaw last year, and they wanted to take advantage of it, good for them if they did, but that's encouraging to see. And from an average age point of view, you're still around about fifty years, and when I look at your investments outside of target dates, you're about seventy percent equity, thirty percent fixed, that's about spot on for a fifty-year-old. So that's good to see, those that have done it themselves have a good understanding of where they should be from a risk point of view. And then at the bottom here, from a target date point of view, it has slowly been dialing down, as you can see, about over the past year, there's five percent less employees actually doing the target dates, they're doing their own now, but it's still a very high level, though, over seventy percent of folks are putting in target dates. And that brings me to one last point, what we're going, we're going to go back to Empower. When you guys bid this five years ago, whenever it was, Empower came in with that great cost, but said you've got to use our target date funds. And the target date funds have been fine, but they're fairly expensive compared to Vanguard's out there and others, you know, because they just do asset allocation, these guys are doing active managers and stuff.
They got great.
But in my mind, remember, over ninety percent of your expected return is going to be driven by your asset allocation. So what I say to most folks, determine what that asset allocation is, and now fortunately with target date funds, they do it for you because they make it age-based, put your money in it and then go away, and it de-risks over time. Don't try and guess, okay, this active manager now, that active manager, and you'll have more certainty long-term, and you'll probably end up with more assets at the end of the day when you retire. So at this point, I'm going to go back on behalf of the county to Empower and say, hey, look, assets are larger now, we heard you about the fee, but we would like to add Vanguard's target date funds in there, and see if I get the institutional share classes, which I got next door at Cumberland, and they're nine basis points. If you can get a platform where all your folks can invest for nine basis points, I think that's great for you long-term. So I'll report back on that obviously for the next meeting, but that's all I have for Any questions on any of that?
I think, one thing moving forward, I think if you could put it on a stick so we can put it on the screen, you would like that?
Can a stick go in this, or do you need a computer? Do I need to bring my computer?
You have a computer right there.
Yeah, we got it.
Oh, you have a computer?
Yeah, just a stick.
So I can put a flash drive in here?
Yep.
Okay, let me make a note of that now then.
You might have said this, but on the observation for the market value, it's twenty-seven-point-two million dollars. For somebody that doesn't actively participate in their investments but goes along with the program, what was the rate of return for twenty-twenty?
The average rate of return?
Yeah.
It's hard to say because they're all individuals.
Okay.
So they don't, it's not a pooled like your OPEB and your pension fund.
Okay, so you wouldn't know.
Yeah, everybody's individual, so it's impossible to know what the pooled amount is. And I would say, I mean, we can do a back-of-the-envelope by saying, this is the assets now, this is what it was last year, and this is the net cash flows in. What we can't do is time-weight that, so it won't be inaccurate, but it'd be used like your actuary would calculate a return, you know, very basic. I can, I'll do that and send you an email if that's okay.
That's all right, I just was wondering, you know, if somebody says you're in the program, but how much did you make this year, I have no idea.
I would guesstimate, noting that most are around about, the average age is fifty, most are around seventy, thirty, if you just took the benches and kind of blended them, you wouldn't be far off, Doug, I think.
No questions for Lee? Thanks for coming.
Thank you, good to see everybody.
Is there any executive sessions, Greg?
No.
Open up for public comment.
Great job.
Okay, if I can have a motion to adjourn?
Make motion during the meeting. Second?
A motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose we are adjourned, for those watching, thanks for hanging with us, and as Greg said, we'll make sure next time we have some slides for this portion that the folks watching can see. So thanks, everyone, and have a great day.